Meeting of the Carver Board of Selectmen, Tuesday, April 5th, 2016. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to Board of Selectmen page on our website for a listing and application. Donations to the food pantry can be made at the Council on Aging or the public library. Please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of community prayer led by Alan Dunham.
Excuse me, excuse me. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessings as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and prayers, especially our first responders after having to deal with two fatal accidents over the last few days as this really weighs upon them. Thank you. Amen.
Amen. We now come to our public comment period. This is a period of 10 minutes that we reserve at the start of each meeting to allow residents to come before the board and take up to three minutes to present some concerns or issues to the board. We do ask that they keep it to three minutes so that other people can speak. Was there anybody that wanted to come before the board this evening? There being none, we will move on to our next item on the agenda. The liquor license application hearing for the North Main Street Market Incorporated, doing business as New England Farms. Good evening.
Good evening. Chairman, members of the board.
Excuse me. Use your microphone so folks at home can hear you.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to wait right till 7:10 since that was posted at the start time?
Yes.
That is absolutely correct, Mr. Dunham.
So we need to fill three minutes here.
So that, should we go back to our discussion of track at Weymouth South High School?
Why don't we appoint Ellen Smith to the Historic District Commission?
We can probably take that out of order unless someone was going to come to speak against her appointment, in which case we should wait till 7:15. So that's also, I think, an issue.
It says 7:25.
Uh...
About the associate...
We go to 7:30 Buzzards Bay Coalition requesting permission.
That's not a public hearing, so you can take that out of order. Only the public hearings, you have to stick to the timetable. Anything else, you can take it out of order.
So you think we can do Ellen Smith's appointment?
I know you can.
Okay.
So I move we appoint Ellen Smith to the Historical Commission.
Second.
And the, well, and the Lakeland Green Preservation Committee.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Make a suggestion that we look at those associate positions at the ag commission. Consider those.
Okay. Those were extra, right? No, those were not foreseen within 48 hours?
Yeah, but they were, um, talking about the one per Sharon Mix.
Well, we have one...
Mix.
Mix. All right, so does someone want to, basically, we have an application to be appointed to the ag commission. It's Sharon Mix of 251 Tremont Street, South Carver.
I move that we appoint Sharon Mix to the Agricultural Commission.
I'll second that, please.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. We also have a request for a one-day special liquor license by the Partaking Service of New England for the Carver Sportsman's Club for April 17th, 2016. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move that. We accept that.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The Buzzards Bay Coalition is requesting permission to display Carver's flag as part of their exhibit on the towns that make up the watershed. How does the board feel about that?
I move we honor this request.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yes.
Those in favor?
I have a, I have a, where is Carver's flag?
Behind, it's folded up.
You mean the town seal?
Yes, that's, that's...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's the town seal, yeah.
Okay.
Just curious. I've never seen a flag.
You thought we had something that you hadn't seen?
That's okay.
I asked the same thing.
Do you want to pull it out, Alan? You know where it is.
We, actually, we should probably display it. I mean, at this...
It was hung. We took it down to hang the TV.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we should get that displayed again somehow.
That's the TV that Ron got through the Area 58.
No, that's not true.
Here we go. Yeah, move over that way so the chair's not in the way. There we go. Very nice, very nice flag.
Okay, so that's the flag that will fly. Will they use this one? Is this what they'll be using? Do we know?
I don't know.
Probably a smaller version of that.
All right. Careful, there's pushpins at the corners.
I'm a job injury.
Well, this work is calm. So motion was made and seconded, and we had some further discussion. Did we vote that? We didn't yet, right? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. And I think we've got to 17 at this point. So we will begin the meeting. This is a liquor license application hearing for North Main Street Market, doing business as New England Farms.
Chairman, members of the board, Leslie St. Germain with McDermott, Quiltean Miller on behalf of the applicant, North Main Street Market, doing business as New England Farms. With me, to my right, is Eric Rosenlund, the proposed manager of record, and behind me is Tom Pratt and Nico Higgins, the beneficial interest holders in the proposed licensee entity. As the board is aware, we are seeking this evening your support and vote in approval of a retail package store beer and wine license to be exercised at 133 North Main Street, Carver. As the board is aware, there is another New England Farms entity operating within the town's limits. These are actually the sons of the owners of those operations, and we see this as an excellent opportunity for these two gentlemen to franchise this operation. They've come up under the guidance of their, of their fathers. They've seen both the challenges of operating an entity with a retail package store license as well as the importance of really being a good neighbor. As the board is aware, under the Ballerin case, there are a number of factors the courts ask us to look at when determining whether a license is appropriate. Among those factors is the character and fitness of the applicants, and I believe that the applicants, given their experience specifically in the town and their exposure throughout their adulthood to this business, are very well-versed in the rules and regulations of the Massachusetts general laws and the rules and regulations of the Commonwealth as well as the town. Another factor that the Ballerin case asks us to look at is the appropriateness of the location and the public need. We feel very strongly that this is an excellent location for a convenience store offering retail beer and wine on a small scale, especially given the fact that it's located on the other side of Route 44 where there are no other existing retail package stores. We don't believe this will have any negative impact on the abutters. We don't believe it will have any negative impact on the traffic. In actuality, we actually think that this will be beneficial to the community. This is going to be a full-service convenience store, offering gas, convenience items, and only 10% of its sales and its floor space will be designated for beer and wine. This is something very different than currently exists in the surrounding area, and given how busy and complex everyone's day-to-day lives are becoming, we really feel this is a need in the community for someone to be able to just hop off the highway, stop without having to do a U-turn, or cross any sort of main thoroughfare, get their gas, get their convenience items, and also if they would like to pick up a bottle of wine or, or some beer. As far as the proposed manager of record, Eric Rosenlund, he has over 20 years' experience in this field. He is a resident of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. He's actually been with New England Farms for six years with the company, and he would be the point person for this operation should it be approved.
I had, I had one question that some of the vendors in town raised a concern about the ownership, because as you're probably aware, for towns under 30,000, you're only allowed to own one liquor license in a town.
Certainly, and this license, as the board, I believe, has the application, is owned by Tom Pratt and Nico Higgins. Their fathers have no ownership stake whatsoever, therefore, there is no overlap in ownership. The only similarity is actually the name, which is a franchisee, no different than a 7-Eleven or another entity.
So who owns the one in South Carver?
The store in South Carver is owned by their fathers.
Okay. So the father...
They have no, they have no, I apologize, they have no beneficial interest in that entity or that license, nor do their fathers have any beneficial interest in this entity or this license. They're entirely distinct, save for the name as the franchise.
Okay, so the father owns South Carver, the two brothers will own North Carver.
Two sons.
Two, I'm sorry, two sons.
Two fathers and two sons, but yes, completely separate and distinct.
Okay, so that's, that's, I think, part of what the concern was. Other questions?
I'm not sure, but is there a set number of, a limit to the number of liquor licenses that a town can have? I mean, because we've got to have a lot out there. I just want to make sure we're not exceeding any limit, or if there is a limit, to a town decide to how many liquor license we could go ahead and grant.
I believe, I believe you are right. Do you happen to know, Elaine?
Carver can have four. We currently have two.
Okay, so these are separate from restaurant liquor license then?
That's a package store for wine and malt.
Oh, so there's a specific category? Package store for wine and malts? So we have Dave's Liquors?
You have four categories that can fall into here, two in restaurants, wine and malt, and then one for all alcoholic. So, so basically, restaurants can have A and B. And then for package stores, it's the same scenario, is you can have a wine and malt, and then you can have all alcohol.
Yeah, we have four package stores with all alcoholic, and we can have four in town. And for wine and malt, we can have four, we only have two. So Dave's is all alcoholic. Dave's, Carver Main Street Liquors, Carver Square Wine and Spirits, and Jamie's Fine Wines and Spirits.
Oh, yeah, because I think, I usually think of Dave's as a convenience store, because they sell a lot of stuff, but therein, under the all alcoholic...
Yep, all alcoholic. For wine and malt, we have Quickie's Convenience and New England Farms on Tremont.
So this would be three, then we'd still be able to have one more if someone were to request that then. Okay, that's all, that was my concern, that we weren't going to be exceeding the number of licenses.
That was also my concern. Thank you for clarifying, Natalie and Michael.
I think Elaine's learned a lot about liquor licenses through this application. Again, I think my only concern is, is that we're just 100% comfortable with the ownership so that, but what's, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move we approve the liquor license for 133 North Main. New England Farms.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Well, I guess my only problem is that I've been approached by a couple of the people who do own some of the liquor stores in North Carver, and, you know, they're, they're a little concerned. They're like, well, we have enough. I mean...
Right, and I apologize, if I could speak to that, I believe, as the board is aware, under the Ballerin case, when determining whether a liquor license should be issued, competition is not a factor that is allowed to be taken into consideration under the law.
So we'd have to find one of the other, we'd have to have an issue with some of the other items that you cited in order to...
There are a number of factors under the Ballerin case, one of which, again, character and fitness, the appropriateness of location, public need, all of which I believe I addressed in my remarks, but specifically, under case law, competition and concerns from competitors is not allowed to be a consideration by the local licensing authority.
I have to admit, I do have a little, little concern as far as, you know, how do you prove a need?
Yeah.
When we have, you know, from the lights at Plymouth and North Main to where this would be, that's three, that's probably in less, in about a three-quarter mile strip of road.
I, I agree. I don't, and I don't think that was the point of, I don't, I think you misunderstood the point of what these, these store owners said. They were addressing public need. They were talking about, but we, there's just so many already.
Well, that's what I mean, because I don't know, to me, public need is, the public really needs this extra store.
Like, there's nothing...
And I'm not totally convinced you've made the case that the public does need one, another place to buy beer and wine.
And if I, if I could speak, if I could speak to that, so...
Please.
Under, under the case law, public need is not public need at the very definition of the word. It includes all of these factors, and you did reference that there are three locations in the nearby area, and if I may, I actually have a diagram of where those locations are. There are actually three locations within one mile, the closest being .6 miles, that is an all-alcoholic beverages retail package store license. The second closest being .7 miles, that also being an all-alcoholic beverages retail package store license, and the third being one mile away, and that being a convenience store with wine and malt. I think there's an important distinction, and again, under the case law, the local licensing authority looks to, as you are aware, simply for the record, the specific nature of the operation being proposed. This is a full convenience store with gas, convenience items, and then additionally the convenience of wine and malt beverages. We believe, one, based on the distinction between this operation and the two retail package store all-alcoholic licenses that are operated nearby, this is not the same offering. This differs both in the experience, in the product provided, and the volume provided, and who you're attracting. This is a convenience as opposed to going out, you know, when I go to a package store, I go to get alcohol for parties, alcohol, you know, for an event, as opposed to, oh, I'm on my way home, I need to get gas, I'm going to stop and get a bottle of wine for dinner tonight. So we actually think this is very distinct from those operations. It's also worth noting that the operation that is one mile away, that is wine and malt with convenience, also does not offer gas, which is distinct from the offerings at this store. Further, we believe that based on the traffic pattern, this store is on the other side of Route 44 of all of the other locations. So instead of having to get off the highway, drive, take a U-turn, and go to pick up your bottle of wine, or if you want some beer, this is a much more simple route, and we believe that this side of Route 44 is actually underserved and that there is a public need.
There is a, there is a liquor store right up the road, if you get off that way, up in Plimpton, right down the road, and there's a gas station right, two gas stations right next to...
In a, and in a separate, for the record, in a separate town.
Correct, yep, but not that far away.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I'm not trying to be picky about this, but technically, you're not making a U-turn, and you're still going to have to, let's say you've come off a Route 44 to go into your establishment, and you're going to be heading south on 58. When you leave your establishment for, you picked up your gas, and you picked up your beer or wine, you're still going to have to make that crossover Route 58. So that argument's a little bit extra. Also, when you say you don't, you know, to you, just going to a liquor store is only for hard liquor, they sell beer and wine there, and there are a lot of people that say, will look at that and say, that's what I'm going for, I'm just going there for beer and wine. They don't have to go to the, to your store. And also, then on the other one, where you're talking about at the, at the Plymouth Street Lights, yes, it is a separate all encompassing liquor store, but there's also another store right there in that same plaza, which would be about the same walking distance, which would have all the same things that you're talking about for your store. So I mean, to make it sound like you're, what you're proposing, not that I'm against it, but I want, I'm just trying to make sure everything's clear, it's not really different than what's going on .7 miles down the road, you know, so...
And there are two, um, gas stations right there as well, yep.
No, I'm not even considering Plimpton, that's, you know, that's their town.
No, 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 I'm talking about the Plymouth Street, the Cumberland Farms, the Main Street Liquor, and then Tom's Gas Station. They're all convenience store gas, liquor, they're all right there.
I see what you're getting at. Mr. Chairman, if I could, since this is a public hearing, I think we've heard from the proponents, we should at least for the record, just ask if there's anyone here to speak against the project.
I was going to get to that. It's like having Sarah Nixon. Were there any residents that wanted to speak to this hearing? There being none, we'll continue forward then.
And I'm sorry, and I certainly, I didn't, I'm not meaning to misrepresent, I'm simply presenting how we see this.
I understand that, and I appreciate that, but I just wanted, I was just trying to get out there, there is a different side to look at it. It's basically the same thing.
I could, I mean, that's your job.
Yeah, exactly.
To clarify, when you're talking about an existing package store next to a gas station, next to a convenience store, well, I certainly understand the point, that is distinct from an entity that's offering, making all of those offerings, and that's simply what I'm talking about, is this sort of one-stop shopping where you don't actually, and I know it's an easy walk, and I know we're all keeping up with our steps on our Fitbit, but, you know, this is a store that's actually offering all of those items as opposed to having to go and make multiple purchases.
One of, one of the concerns I have is that procedurally, I, I would prefer an issue like this to come up before a store starts breaking ground and starts construction, because I imagine you would make a compelling case that in locating a store, that the beer and wine sales constitute some level of significance in, in what you anticipate for attracting people to the store, the actual sales themselves, so that from a business standpoint, I hate to jeopardize a business that's already well underway to and in place. When do you anticipate opening at this point?
On or about June 1st, June 1st.
So that, it seems, in my opinion, this is something that should almost be part of the initial process, to make this determination, because I think it puts an awful burden on the business to suddenly get this far and then find out that an integral part of what they were anticipating as part of the attraction of the location would be unavailable to them, so...
And, and that's not, and that's not our fault. I mean, that it really is the responsibility of the owner to have done that, so...
I, I don't know, I don't know, do we have, is, does the plan, is it up to the owner to decide when to apply?
Well, I think it should be part of the business plan. If that's going to be a huge part of your income, and you're expecting to make up, make up all the money you spent on building the building...
I agree, but I didn't know whether or not this is the process the town of Carver provides them as to the timing of this.
I don't think the town has a, you know, directive that way. I think it's up to the business owner.
Nevertheless, they're at the point they're at.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. In fact, along that line, do you have, do you have an estimation of what you think your beer and wine sales would be as a percentage of what your total sales would be?
We anticipate it would be 10 to 15%, and I certainly understand your concern from a business point of view. We are unable to apply for any sort of license until we either close on the purchase of property, and I say we, meaning any licensee, so that you have a legal right to occupy the property. So either, you cannot apply unless you've already entered into a lease, or that you've purchased, closed on the, on the purchase of property. And I certainly understand your concern, just to provide context.
When did you close on the property? Or are you leasing that facility?
No, I don't know the exact closing date.
I'm not sure, I'm aware of, there is a lease for the property.
In my experience, this is the normal procedure. You, you know, get the, acquire the piece of property, permit the property, and then come apply for the beer and wine license, if there is one available in the town, sometime sooner after.
I guess my concern is that you've broken ground, you're, you've committed to the project, it's under construction, you're counting on beer and wine as a portion of your sales, and if this board decides tonight that we don't want to grant it, I assume that throws a pretty good kink in your plans. So whether, whether it falls on the applicant for the timing, I think we should inform the planning board that as soon as they get something like this, they should as part of their guidance suggest that...
Well, it is, it is a permit, so, I mean, as part of the permitting process, seems like it should have happened during the rest of the permitting process.
That's all I'm getting at, is I, I don't know whether the fault falls on the applicants or whether we should have given them guidance or whatever it might be. My only point is, for the future, I'd like to see it somehow addressed, that this come earlier so that they might have decided not to proceed if they weren't going to be granted a license.
I agree, this is kind of late in the ballgame for, you know, because like you say, they're, they're counting on us granting this license as part of their business model of how they're going to make money at their store, and at this late date, I mean, it'd be, you know...
We certainly understand, in no way are attempting to delay the process. This was the same process that when the separate owners of the separate New England Farms store permitted their license at that location, this was the same process that they would...
The timing might be the same, I guess that, that was a flaw then too, is my, is my point, is that...
It wasn't on the board then.
I, I, I mean...
And, you know, we're looking, trying to look out for your benefit too. That's why, you know, that's why Mr. Clark and I, I think both share this concern that it's so late in the ballgame, because it's, it's really not even that fair to, you know, the people, you, to you guys who are going to be, you know, putting this business into operation without, before this, knowing, at least having an idea of which way a board would be going on something like this.
And, and if we don't, it doesn't happen to be the case, but if we had a roomful of opposition tonight, raising valid points about why this shouldn't happen, again, you'd be this far along in the process and then finding out that 10 to 15% of your anticipated revenue might not be happening, so it just, it just seems to me to be a pretty good flaw, and I think somehow if we can...
Take a look at this later down then?
Yeah, just mention something to the planning board, that maybe they suggest that you come earlier rather than later in the future, but...
Can I make a comment?
Yep.
I think with the New England Farms in South Carver, there was a big concern from the owner of the store right with the post office in South Carver, that he was going to be out of business. We did go forward with that license, and I think the store is still, is still in the center there, right next to the post office, is still doing, doing business and okay.
What, as there, as these folks' representatives said, though, we're not supposed to make our decision based on whether...
Competition.
I heard that, but I'm just making that comment.
No, and it's good to know that too, but the thing, the difference down there is that I believe the store next to the post office is that maybe there was a need down there. There really only was one in the general vicinity.
But they were worried about getting knocked out of business.
Yeah, yeah.
And just as a comment, the other thing was, I'm concerned about this permit, I mean, the, the planning board has been going forward with a few of the things that some of the other boards or commissions in town haven't known about, like us, and I'm thinking of, in this case, something came up on the earth removal committee, and I'm on that. So I know that they weren't aware, I'm, that, that the New England Farms project was going forward till it was too late or something on that order.
There was no permit...
But I think that there were, needed to be some notification from the planning board to Selectmen and Earth Removal, and maybe other committees in some way.
So does that mean there was no earth permit, earth removal permit issued?
Well, it was, it was too late because at that point, it wasn't applicable, and or something on that order.
Why wasn't it applicable?
Because the work was already done, I think. Is that right?
It could have gotten, it could have gotten a permit after the fact from, from your board.
Well...
I brought it up in the Selectmen meeting two meetings ago.
I think that would, I think that's after the, you know, the bond doors closed that we're talking about it.
Anyway, let's get back on track and deal with the license before us.
The process was what I was trying to get at.
No, I, I think it'd be worthwhile, Mr. Town Administrator, to perhaps gather the, some members from each of the boards, and I know at one point, we paid a lot of attention trying to make sure that there was good notice that went around to all the boards when something was in place, and maybe we've gotten away from that a little bit.
I think so.
So that it might be worthwhile to discuss a process where all the boards are sort of up to speed on projects that are ongoing in town.
I think there used to be something called the Technical Review Committee, where a lot of department heads all got together, fire, conservation, board of health, and everybody was kind of all on the same page, everyone knew what was going on, and let the applicants know too. I mean, it was as much for the applicant's benefit as, as for the town's.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's something we need to put on a future agenda so we can hash that out, and we don't have to keep these poor people waiting in suspense anymore.
Yes, if they've heard of the internal issues.
Good point.
So Elaine, can I ask you to do that? Make that a topic, an agenda topic for the future?
Well, just to, I don't, we probably don't need as agenda topic. The technical review committees are ongoing. This issue with the, the permit, there's a conflict in the actual bylaws that the in the actual bylaws, that the earth removal permit is exempt from a project that's doing a redevelopment and a site work, so there's a conflict there in the, in the bylaws.
Yes, we need the bylaw looked at.
Well, that is...
But even, even beyond that, though, just knowing what, what projects are coming before the town, I think all the boards should just have some sort of sense as to what that is, but, anyway, so we'll take that up on a separate agenda. There was a motion and a second to approve the license, further discussion? There being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm going to be opposed, because I don't really think there's a need in that area.
The only thing I would ask is, I, I just will ask that we confirm the ownership is completely separate.
The ownership, Chairman, yes, the ownership is 100% completely separate.
Well, no, I meant, we'll probably ask the ABC or something, just to, you know, get their blessing.
And trust me, they'll be, they, they love pouring over these, so, yes.
Okay, okay.
They're, again, it's similar to a 7-Eleven, this is an opportunity for the Two Sons to grow their own business, and they're very excited about it.
All right, so I guess the vote's been taken, so good luck with the, the operation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the town administrator update.
Pass the, around to be started.
Oh, okay.
I didn't hear this. Oh, okay. So you cleaned out five...
Thank you, thank you very much. Sorry to keep you waiting there.
Okay. All right, so you got plenty there to do. So that's all the need?
No, I just signed it, and I thought I was the only one, I don't know why.
Good, okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Chairman, this Monday, we have our annual town meeting for 2016, the warrant was properly posted on, the warrant was properly posted this past Friday, in, in proper time for town meeting. I don't know if there's any questions that you have on, on this, I, I just want to provide a little bit of clarification, if I could, just real quickly, on some of the articles, and this came out of some town, town council review. Article number one, town council, after conversations with the town clerk, added into article one, the approval of the town meeting procedures, so that'll be part of article one, I don't believe that substantially changes that article at all. Article two, there were no changes from council. Article three, there were no changes. Article four, there were no changes, and again, that's $120,000 going into the snow and ice account. Article number five, I believe this $25,000 was a change from the last meeting, and this incorporates some technical review, so that the superintendent and I can hire some external assistance if we need to for our long-range facilities plan.
Michael, I'm sorry, did you mean...
So again, that's $25,000.
I'm sorry for interrupting, did you mean article four?
No, article five.
Yeah, what we have in front of us shows article...
$25,000 is under article four. Maybe it's another $25,000.
You looking at the summary of warrant?
Oh, no, I'm not at the summary, I'm sorry, I'm on the actual warrant itself.
So is there a distinction between the two?
The summary is still a draft. No, the, okay, if you're looking at the summary, that has to do with snow and ice, that $25,000. Article five is the allocation of funds from free cash.
Okay.
So article five in the, in the warrant itself is, is what I was speaking to, and again, that's the $25,000 for that technical assistance. Article six, we do not have any solar projects that are ready to go at this point, but in speaking to town council, when they were looking at this article, article six is, is not site-specific, it just allows, it grants the selectmen the authority to do solar projects in the future, without having to mention those site-by-site, I mean, the town's done, you know, half a dozen of these, I think they've been very lucrative to the town, as we just put $100,000 towards the new school, so what this does is, this would, with the approval of this, it would expedite the review, so that if there is a solar project coming into the town, the selectmen can just take that up, and you're authorized to actually negotiate a pilot with, without having to wait six, nine, 12 months to bring it back to town meeting, to get the authority to negotiate, this gives you preapproval to go forward and do that. And again, I think you've demonstrated you've done these very successfully, so really, this is not a new concept. Having said that, you didn't take a vote on article six, we just tabled it until we had the final language from council, so if you're in agreement approving this, you should take a vote on your recommendations for it.
It's the pleasure of the board.
I move...
Tim?
I'm sorry, I move that we recommend article six.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And just so people know out there, that's the solar payment in lieu of tax agreements article.
Payment in lieu of taxes, you, you hear that term pilot a lot, and that's what it, that's what it's referring to, payment in lieu of taxes, and I, I know when we've looked at these pilots before, one of the reasons we're doing it this way is because there has been a lot of chatter up at the Beacon Hill about the idea that, since it's a renewable form of energy, that at some point, there have been some suggestions by legislators that perhaps solar fields and farms should not be taxed, or, and by taking these actions, should those changes come through, these vendors have already agreed to these payments in lieu of taxes, so even if that change were to come through at some point, they, they don't get, they would not receive any relief from this agreement.
Because we have a contract, so we're able to better protect the town. I don't want to use the word absolute, but it's the best defense that we have, is to have a contract based upon legal's advice.
Okay, thank you.
Article seven, I don't believe there are any word changes in that. Article eight, I don't believe there were any changes there. Article nine is the CPC, nothing there. Article 10, there were no changes. Article 11, there were no changes in article 11. Yep, there were no changes in article 11. Article 12, there were no changes. Article 13, there were no changes. Article 14 and article 15, there were no changes since your last met, so again, I just wanted to point out those clarifications.
Is this intended to be part of the, the release, that the public will pick up a handout as they enter town meeting?
So the intent is, is we will have the entire warrant available with all the appendices, printed out for everybody, attached to this will be the financial management policies, will be town meeting procedures, will also be a summary of, a five-page summary of the town, the state of the town, so that's...
This, this document that we just did, that we're looking at here?
That'll be part of the package, yes.
I was just going to suggest that if it hasn't been printed yet, it might be good, since it's a brief summary, of posting the board of selectmen and FinCom votes on here as well.
Oh, with the summary piece, good idea.
On the summary of warrant, it wouldn't hurt to have that there for someone taking a quick look-through, so they can see...
Yeah.
What's been approved and not approved. And then, I think there was one of them we took separately, so you may want to break it up into, what is it, 11A, 11B, or, no, whichever it was.
7A.
7A and 7B, so you may want to just take that into account.
Well, also, and I believe in the package for the members of town meeting, will be the various appendices, A, B, C, D, E, maybe F, which is, I've talked to the town administrator about, it's having one simpler page, because even though all the numbers are there in article seven, as to what we're paying out, whatnot, I asked if we couldn't have at least one page, it was fairly simple, this is what's coming in, this is what we're paying out, this is what your tax rate's going to be based on, this X number of dollars, and also, I'd like to add for the public, a lot of this information is now already, is now already online, on the webpage, I checked that out yesterday and today, thank you, Elaine, for getting that on there. Are we going to get the last five budgets on there eventually, too?
Well, actually, I think my request at the board vote for was the last five years' annual town meeting, which would include budgets.
Yeah, what was that again, the last five years?
It was my understanding you were asking, requesting for the budget...
Mm-hmm.
Of the last five years.
For the last five years.
Website, yeah, okay.
Right.
I'm sorry, I just need to make sure we're not printing up the last five years as part of this.
No, 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 no.
Only for the webpage.
Just for the webpage, yeah, and the other thing I wanted to say here is that article seven, part A, is A, part A1 and A2, just to be really clear, we had voted to split those two.
Mm-hmm. So what was it, wasn't it 7A and 7B, or is it 7A1?
No, 7A1, A2.
7A, because they're part A, B, C, and D, so...
Oh, okay.
And A1 was the organizational chart, and A2 was the wage and salary.
So, all right.
On seven, it should be the, the selectmen's vote for 7A1, 7A2?
Actually, there's a third, actually, it's AA, AB, and AC, right?
That's correct, under part A, there are three sections, appendix A, appendix B, and appendix C, so those are broken onto three different motions from our last meeting, so we got motion AA, AB, and AC, because they refer to appendix A, B, and C, so that was the initial motion of A, A was broken, so that each one of those appendices were voted separately.
Okay.
So that is broken up into the actual warrant itself.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if we're going to put a summary of the votes, that should be included in the summary.
Correct, and, and the other thing is that although I agree with Alan on having a simple summary, I also think it's very, very important to keep each department's budget as a...
That's in there, too, but this is just a, an extra sheet that, you know, you know, people, and it's in there, I think it's appendix E that breaks down each department's budget, but I want, I'd like to have something that's just real simple, so people will know, hey, this is what our tax rate's going to be based on next year, it's because we need to raise X number of dollars from the ta, from the taxpayer.
Okay, did you need a vote on that, or we just, that was just something to review?
The only one you need to vote on was the solar, everything else was covered by your votes of last meeting.
Very well, anything else, sir?
Um, no.
Go to the board of selectmen update, Mr. Ward.
The only thing I would have for comment is, is that the next school, new school, elementary school building committee will be, meeting will be tomorrow night, will be meeting with the architects and the project manager, and updating where we're at with the Mass School Building Authority, so when we get something on that, maybe Michael has something more to say on that, I don't know, I've been out of the loop a little.
At this point, no, we're just going through the further design and review and budget estimates for the school, and we're just in that, that process right now, so, so no, no new updates on that.
And that'll be reported on tomorrow night?
Correct.
Okay, that would be all tonight for me, less talking, the less coughing.
Ms. Hewens? Did I get that right?
You did.
Thank you.
That's, that's very good. Yeah, I wanted to, I see that we're having a request for the use of Shortliff Park from the Carver Music Boosters later on, and I just, I could do it then, but I wanted to do it now, I just, for those who don't, aren't familiar with the Carver Music Boosters, and I know you are, Alan, they just do such a tremendous job, the music department at school, and these music boosters are all, you know, just family members, they, they, they raise money to help the kids buy instruments, and I just think that people maybe, aren't, some people aren't aware of the, how important the music program is, just academically, how much it helps kids academically, so I just want to put in a plug there, come to music in the park when they, when they're in Shortliff Park this summer, it's always great.
And it's free.
And it's free.
I'll, I'll second that, my wife spent a long time as chair of the Music Boosters, and we, we had two children go through it, so that they do great work, at one time, the Music Boosters, when there was no music course in the high school, had, came up and raised the money to fund Gil Barakat going over there and running a band class in the first period, and we had to fund that ourselves, so...
Isn't that something?
Anyway, okay, Mr. Dunham.
Okay, thank you. As I said before, everything with article seven and the town warrant is on the town's website, I, what I did not notice, and I'd like it if we could put it on there, is the rules for, that we're going to be operating town meeting on, so that can be on there, if it's not already, you could have that, that way we'll make sure the public is fully up on everything we're going to be doing, and how, how we're going to be operating, so we're all starting off on the same page. Also, I mentioned it during the prayer, we had two fatal accidents in town within 48 hours, I've asked that everybody's thoughts and prayers can be with the victims, but also with the emergency responders, police, EMS, and fire, whenever they have to go to an incident like that, that is extremely hard on them, I can speak from experience on that one, so if you'll keep, you know, maybe say an extra prayer for all our first responders, for them and their families, as they get over this, as well as the victims themselves, thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Couple of points, just to reiterate, and sort of beat a dead horse, just making sure we're working on the planning next year, that just as we've been essentially done with the budget for the last month, that the warrant articles are also closed off at the same time, it'll save a lot of these, you know, make a lot of these meetings that we've gone through sort of extraneous, it does mean, it puts a burden on, you know, the, the office staff, it puts a burden on the timing for everyone that wants to get something in, but again, I think, I know when Mr. Carter from the FinCom was championing, championing this idea, the idea is that, that town has a month ahead of time to look over articles that might be coming before town meeting, and the budget itself, and I think it'll make for a more effective town meeting, and certainly, if anyone stands up and cries foul, we're going to say, hey, it's been out there for a month, you've had an opportunity to review everything, and really, the idea is to let the, the folks in town have a chance to look everything over ahead of time, so that they can come to town meeting informed about what the issues are, and register their votes, yea or nay.
But this one, you mean in the future?
In the future, yeah, I'm talking about next year when we get to it.
It hasn't been out for a month.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, we, we got the budget done in time, and, but I think next year, we'll add the warrant articles into that, and just means those articles will be getting shut off that much earlier, but there's no reason we can't, as I say, I think Ducksbury finished their town meeting, you know, March 10th or something, so, and again, unfortunate, if the time comes when, when we get to June, and the state decides that there was an extra million dollars they forgot to give us, it'll be a joyous town meeting to reconvene, but I know that Mr. Milonowski's analysis has shown that it usually doesn't amount to a hill of beans, what happens from when we get the governors and legislatures initiate, initial negotiated numbers, and what the final numbers work out to be, so, and then also, town meeting is next Monday, the 11th of April, it's, it's upon us...
10:00 PM?
Pardon me, 7:00 PM, so it's upon us now, so just, we hope to see everyone at the high school that night for the town meeting. The following evening, the selectmen will be convening here in executive session, so it won't be televised, completing the review of the town administrator's evaluation, and then we should also come to that meeting prepared to, actually, no, that'll be the following meeting, the goals and objectives, but we should be thinking about what we want for goals and objectives for the town administrator for the coming year. At the following meeting, which is on the 19th, which will be Mr. Ward's last meeting as a member of the board of selectmen, see his eyes light up just by saying that?
Little smile comes to his face.
At that meeting, we will be announcing the results of the town administrator's evaluation, and confirming or deciding upon what the goals and, his goals and objectives will be for the coming year. Then, we will have the election coming up on Saturday, April 23rd, there are two people running for one position in the board of selectmen, and three people running for two positions on the school committee, I believe those are the only contested races that we have.
Yes, they are.
So that we do urge everyone to show up on Saturday, the 23rd, and I believe the voting is from 8:00 to 6:00 PM, 8:00, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and that's all I have at this time, so we'll move on to minutes and licenses, and topics not reasonably anticipated with the chairman 48 hours in advance, we've covered some of that, what's the pleasure of the board for the minutes of March 31st?
Mr. Chair, I have an amendment, and it's not the fault of the wonderful person who took the minutes. One, two, three, on page three, under article seven, it has, and this is something, Michael, you just said these three, the townwide organizational chart, wage and salary pay scale, and salary classification plan for elected non-union, that those are really three separate things now?
Literally A, B, A, 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 B.
Okay, but in these minutes, for, for better or for worse, in these minutes, what was actually voted was to amend A1 to read, approval amendments to townwide organizational chart FY17. FY17, and all the money part was, was put into A2.
Right.
And I get why it was made into three separate parts. But I'm just saying, for the purposes of the minutes, the first motion was to amend A1 to read, approve amendments to townwide organizational chart FY17, period, yeah. And then move the other stuff down to the second part of that, that Alan motioned to have part two read, all the money stuff.
So is that a motion to approve subject to those, that amendment?
It is.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
That should be a 3-0, right?
3-0?
Yeah, because we, Mr. Ward and Helen were not, and Ms. Maron were not in attendance at that meeting.
That's right. Well, it could be a 3-0-1.
Wasn't there a ruling that you could vote on minutes of a meeting you didn't attend?
You can vote on the minutes, but you can't vote to amend the minutes if you want to.
Okay. Which is still confusing.
Which is motion was.
Still confusing that you can even vote on the minutes, even without amendments.
Sounds weird.
So anyway, Dick, you're not voting on that issue.
Okay. I abstain.
Good, excellent. Request to use Shirtlift Park Carver Music Boosters on the 17th of July from noon to 4:00 PM. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and also waive the, the fee for using Shirtlift Park.
I second that.
Now, I'm noticing on here that beneath where it says 717, where Daddy-O will be performing for the afternoon, it mentions August 14th.
Yeah, there are three dates.
But on the agenda, it's only listing one date.
Okay, so we can only take that one at the time, then. Only take the one that was advertised. So motion made and seconded to approve July 17th? Was it motion made to approve in the second? Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Maybe advise them, Elaine, that they'll have to...
With all due respect, can't we handle this as a, as a something unexpected by the chairman?
It was just a typo, I think.
I mean, it's a, it was a typo, probably, because there's, there are three dates that were on the application.
I think the chairman could rule in that direction, yes.
The chair is going to exercise the wide discretion that he possesses and allow consideration for June 11th, when Wayne Potash, or Potash, will be playing, as well as on August 14th, when the Hyannis...
Sound, which is really a good group.
Hyannis Sound will be playing. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we approve those.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor?
I just mentioned that those, those days will probably be requested by the farmer's market to be open, and we have always worked well with the music group.
I think one of them is a Sunday, so I don't know if they're all Sunday. One's a Saturday.
Two are Sundays.
Two are Sundays, one's a Saturday.
Yep.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? There being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. And we move to the request for a one-day license for the St. John's Club on April 23rd from 6:00 to 11:00 PM. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we approve.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Again, we've already mentioned that we have town meeting next Monday, an executive session of the board next Tuesday, and on the 19th, we have the la, the next regular session of the board, and then on April 23rd is the election. Mr. Town Administrator, is there a need for executive session this evening?
For about two minutes.
That's a yes?
Yes.
Is there a motion to go in an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining negotiations with unions and for non-union negotiations, and with all non-union personnel not under contract, and strategy for litigation and for purchase, exchange, sale, lease, or value of real estate that may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town if held an open session, and to reconvene an open session?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Alan Dunham says?
Aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye.
Ron Clark says aye.
Dick Ward says aye.
We are now adjourned from our, where, well, actually, we're moving into executive session.
But, Mr. Chairman, before we do, that's reconvene, when we come out, we'll reconvene an open session only to go ahead and...
Correct.
Adjourn.
And adjourn.
All right, so we're now in executive session. We'll return to open session only to adjourn.